All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Dotre. Well, it is a beautiful rainy morning here in Lubbock, Texas. Thank you, Lord, for the rain. It is 10:30 on April 9th of 2024, and we are convening in city council chambers, and we are immediately going into executive session. I anticipate executive session will last until roughly 1:45, or we will come back for a brief work session and then begin our agenda promptly at 2:00 P.M. If we have more work that needs to be done, we possibly could recess back into executive session after council session, uh, council is done. Uh, we'll just kind of play that by ear. However, at this time, city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code; and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code; and finally, personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So at this time, city council will be in recess to executive session. All right, good afternoon. Glad to see everyone here. We are back from executive session and had a little lunch and went back to executive session. So we're now coming back in for a work session. This time, we are convening back for work session regarding items for presentation and discussion to hear and discuss presentations regarding the Clap Pool report. So as soon as we're done with this, we'll move to our ceremonial items and then call to order for our regular meeting. And with that, Colby, the floor is yours, sir.
See if I can, presentation up. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to talk about Clap Pool and some of the findings and issues that we've had during the off-season and leading up into this season. And so, please, if you have any questions during the presentation, please just stop me, and I'll be glad to expand on that information if need be. So just a little bit of a brief history on Clap Pool. It was built in 1953. We have a picture here of, from the Lubbock County Facebook page. And right now, it's currently sitting at 71 years old. And so, beginning last year at the end of the season, staff came to me and we were concerned. They were concerned because the pool was, was starting to turn green on a regular basis during the, during the afternoon hours. And so they were having trouble, you know, keeping the chemical levels balanced. And so one of the things that was helping cause this was that our auto, our auto fill valve, which is, is a, is a, is a valve that will turn on as the water goes down or whatnot to keep the, the pool, uh, full, that feature was running 24 hours a day. And so that with the, knowing that with that water coming in, you're not going to be able to keep the pool balanced with city water going into it. And so that led us to believe that there was a potential leak in the pool. We were able to finish out the, the rest of the season, but we were having issues. And so as soon as the pool season was over, staff started to get to work on, on what, what was the cause? And we, so, so we started diagnosing what, what was going on. One of the first things that we did is we started reaching out to different pool companies to see if they could help us, whether it was video camera in the lines. One of the things that you can do when you potentially have older pools is be able to do a pressure test on the pool. And basically, you're, you're pressurizing the lines that go through there, and it'll be able to tell you, if you're losing pressure, it'll be able to tell you that you do potentially have a leak. But with the age of our pool, that was a concern by the pool companies because they felt like if they ran that pressure test, they may create more harm than good. And, and so we were, at that point, we were kind of wondering, okay, what, what do we do here now? And, and so we started off and we ran a static leak test. Basically, we filled the pool back up and we let it sit. We didn't turn on any of the pump features. We just let it set to see what was going on with it. And as you can see by the, the slide there, we lost a total, just over 300,000 gallons of, of water in 20, uh, 20 days. And so that's 85% of the total pool. Now, what did come about by this test is we, we did, we were able to figure out that once it got past the, that red line that's up there, which is the start of the deep end, the, the water loss stopped. And so that told us right away that that was, that was where the leak was at. And, and these older pools, they were built with expansion joints in them. And so we were able to, to determine, yes, that is it going to be at the, at the expansion joint. And so at that point, we really weren't real, real concerned as far as we could make that work and we could, we could baby that along and be able to continue to go forward. My aquatics coordinator at the time, he went down and he looked into, into the pump room. And, and what he wanted to do is we've got the different pipes that run through there. He just wanted to check to make sure there wasn't anything that was going on down there that we weren't aware of that potentially could be adding to, adding to that leak. And so when he did, he discovered, he looked up and he discovered that the, 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 this picture is the pump room. And so this is the floor of the pump room, but it all, is also the, the floor, the ceiling of the balance tank. And so the balance tank is where the, um, these pools were not built with a suction like your home pools would now that you go down and touch and you can grab it. It's, it's built where, where gravity feeds that tank, and then it's taken from that surge tank, and then it's pressurized and brought through the filtration system to be cleaned and be put back into the pool. So when we went down to look at that, we saw that, that we had some, some major issues. And I'm going to show you a couple pictures here. This is the ceiling of the, the pump room. And so you can see that you have rebar that has been rusted. You have crumbling concrete. And, and really, you've got some hollow spots in the floor. I was out with the public works team. We, we went through and, and took a, a ball of, off my Jeep, and you could, you could, you could hit the concrete, and you could, you could hear the, the hollow spots. But also, a couple times when I did that, you could hear stuff hitting the water underneath. And so you could see, you could hear that stuff was falling off of either concrete or rust from the, the rebar was falling through. At, at that point, we immediately started working, okay, what is the potential? What are the options of, of being able to, to reinforce this ceiling floor, being able to add some different things? At first, we thought, felt like, okay, maybe we can come in and reinforce the floor so that we don't have any worries in that nature. And so we started asking different engineering companies to, to come and take a look. The first engineering company, they all, they both said, yes, this is dangerous. But they never really got back to us. And so we, at that point, we reached out to, to Park Hill and had some of their structural engineers come and look at it. The first option that we were thinking is reinforce the floor. The only way to do that is to be able to potentially take off the roof, and then we'd have to really cut a hole because that, that, that white area that you see, the light area, is the only access that you have down to it. So bringing in anything was going to be difficult to get down through that, to that space, that crawl space for, for people. It's not meant for something of that nature. And so they were first working on, what, what does that look like to be able to build a new pump room potentially? Or, you know, take the roof off of this one? And, and the numbers got to the where they were just, they were, they were unheard of as, as far as into the, the million dollar range to, to do that. And just really didn't see that as a viable option. And so we looked at a different route to be able to say, okay, could we come in and replumb the entire system? And that's the solution that they have come up with. And, and so that solution is there, that they will, they will take the sump pit, uh, pump, uh, sump pit, excuse me, that is right next to the, the current, pump house area. And they were going to, they're going to replumb that to be the water holding tank. So the area that you see that's bad is going to turn in, is going to move over, would be moved over to another area. And then we would plumb in through the, the surge tank area to where we need to get to the pressurized water. We would build that outside of the pool, the pool, just a few yards off, uh, in, still in the fenced area, but just outside of that pool. And that, that is a solution that, that can work, that we believe is, is, is doable. But it will not allow, the, the timeframe to do that is going to be about a four to six month process, which will end up closing our pool for this season. The, the estimate cost of repairs for that is, is right at $325,000. And so, you know, as they will go through that process, they will relocate the surge tank, they will relocate the pumps, they will relocate all the electrical. So anything in that room that is vital for the operation of the pool, they will have to rerun those and, and put them in new locations. So that it comes down to is Clap will not be open. Staff is requesting direction as far as which way will we, uh, which way do we want to, um, to move forward? And then also, we, I do want to remind everybody that we do have our splash pads that are, that are, the construction schedule is, is on time. And we, we believe that we will be at the very first part of summer around Juneish or so being able to open up at least three of the two, uh, or two of the three splash pads at the start of the summer. The, the other one may come on just a little bit later than that. That's all that I've got as far as the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have or, uh, walk through into the technical side a little bit more if you need that.
Thank you, Colby. Mr. McBrier?
Colby, uh, this is temporary extension of the life of Clap Pool. I mean, what are you estimating that this will add on to the life of that pool?
You know, Councilman, I, I really, I really can answer that as far as...
Barring some other unforeseen big problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's the worry, is that I, that we could put this money to it and, and next year, as we're bringing that onboard, we could have some other issues that, that we just don't know of right, of right now. In theory, this should give us a, a few more years, potentially, if there are no other problems. This will work. It is, it, it will be able to, to keep the, the pool in the same function as far as the filtration system. It will not require us to go out to do a, a total rebuild of the system because of the threshold of the dollar figure. And so it's, this portion that we will build should last us for some time. Now, does that, you know, you're talking expansion joints. They don't build them that way anymore. And so there's a lot of different factors. I can't guarantee a time, but this particular fix should last for, for multiple years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McBrier. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
We are again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I think when we closed the three pools, of course, age, and we'd been band-aiding the problem and whatnot. And, you know, we ended up with our splash pads, which I'm pretty excited about. I think it's going to be wonderful. The black eye for the city was closing the pools, but we, we're giving something in return that I think is going to give us a lot of opportunity. With this pool, it's like when, I don't want to see another pool closed, but I get it. I think in this case, for me, I would Band-Aid the problem just until we can figure something out. I've expressed that I would like to see an aquatic center because I think it's necessary as the city continues to grow. And, um, you know, it's, it's a tough call, no doubt. But I have a lot of faith in our Parks Department. And I believe that this, it, it's hard to say, put money into it when we could be channeling that money into something new. But just PR-wise, I think for me, it would have to be to support Band-Aiding the problem. And that's a tough call for me.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Um, let's see, Mr. Masengill, are you on?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Masengill.
Thanks, Mayor. Where would the 325 come? I guess that's not budgeted in current budget. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, that is correct. That's not currently budgeted. What I think, if council would like us to move forward with this, it'll come into next year's budget as a capital project, and we'll get busy.
Ms. Joy?
New pool. Have you priced what it would cost to replace the whole thing? Tear it up. Thwart over.
We have some potential figures. The, the, the hard part about this is that it, it really depends on how big and how, I mean, your, your range of what you could do here could go from, you know, $5 million to $15 million. It, it's really going to depend on, on what size those types of things are.
Same size, same sizes we have now.
You know, just off the top of my head, you're looking in between six to eight.
Million?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think we had a discussion early on with this council about pools in general and the fact that, you know, maybe we do need to look at an auditorium or something like that. So I think that's just something that's going to have to be put in the future if we want it reopened to the tune of 325,000 with no guarantees. It's going to be a tough call. A very tough call.
Yes, it is.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Right, Mayor, I have just one more question. So you're saying that we're basically forecasting that over the summer, Clap Pool will be closed?
Yes, ma'am. I cannot open Clap Pool safely with my guards. Those, in that pump room, the guards and staff have to be in there daily. That, that, as soon as we start the pool, those pumps run 24 hours a day, every day. And so there are, there are vibrations that if you look at, at, you know, this picture is right over the top of it. That pump system there is vibrating all the time. And so you, you potentially have that it, that it's just going to continue. And then with the chlorine added into the pool, you're going to continue to have failures. And, and the last thing we want is one of our staff in there and, and something happens.
And we actually got to see that. And I, when we did the tour, you could already see all the, the aging infrastructure issues. It was already evident that that would probably be next. But I guess the other part is, will we set up something? Are we proactively going to set up something for the, for the kids? Because that is a well-attended pool, and there are so many children in that neighborhood. So I think for me, it's just important that we start planning if that's the case and start thinking, you know, just making sure that we have something in place.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Any other questions, Colby? All right, thank you for your presentation. We've got a lot of things to think about on that. All right, city council will continue now in open session, and we will first begin... We will first begin, pause, with our ceremonial items. And today, I'm pleased to welcome Josh McDonald. He's a chaplain and youth minister with Covenant Health System and Second Baptist Church. I know many people know Josh here. Got to meet him earlier. Appreciate him being here. If you would all please rise if you, if you wish. And as soon as the prayer is done, we will immediately move into our pledges led by Mayor Potem Patterson Harris. Pastor McDonald?
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to be here. And a couple weeks back, or months ago back, my pastor, Charlie Johnson, gave a message on Sunday. And he had the opportunity to speak with the Fort Worth ISD. And when he went to speak to them and what he told them has resonated with me. And what he told that ISD is he started off with, "Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your willingness to look out for others. Thank you for doing a job that is hard, sometimes very thankless, always a critic, but standing in there and doing the right thing." And so I just want to kind of follow what I learned in Charlie from that minute, say, "Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing." And before I pray, I'm going to say this, is what I found in scripture as thinking about government. From Romans 13, verse 1, it says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. For the governing authority is God's servant for your good." And I think it's just important for us to keep that in mind, all of us, that what you do is for our good through God's hand. And so again, thank you. So I'll say a prayer, and then we'll hand off. Lord Jesus, such a gift it is to be here today with these men, with these women, God, that you have instituted, that you have brought into this position to govern, to lead this city, to help these people of love, uh, to be good. And so, Lord, I pray that you would guide and direct the thoughts and the actions and the words of each and every one of these people up here. I pray, God, that you would put on their hearts your desires. I pray, God, that you would give them your plans. I pray, God, that you give them the strength to walk strong when it seems like everything is against them. I pray, God, that you let them have the grace they need when it just feels like, I got to sit down and rest. I cannot take another step. And that they would know, God, beyond any shadow of doubt, that they are not forsaken nor abandoned, but that you are with them and that you will help them. Lord, I pray for the city. I pray for the people in the city. I pray that we move closer to you and look to you in all that we do. And in this, God, I ask that your hand of blessing would be upon us so that we may be a city on a hill, a light to those that are around us. Ask all this in Jesus' name, through the power of the Spirit, all the glory of God the Father. Amen.
Thank you. Would you please remain standing as we offer the pledge of the United States and Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, we will now move to our time for citizen comments. According to local rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting may do so and have an opportunity to make comments, express a position on an agenda item. Some of you I see have done this before, so it's an old hat for you, some, if you've never done this before. When your name is called, if you'll please step forward to the microphone here, if you'll state your name and your address. And at that time, you'll have three minutes. Jimmy, over here, will give you a first ring of a bell when you hit two and a half minutes, and then you'll have 30 more seconds. And then he'll give you a double ring when your three minutes is up. Once we're done with citizen comments, we'll move to our consent agenda and to our regular agenda. All right, thank you all for being here today. And I'll first start off with Joe Rushing.
How are you guys doing today? Appreciate it. Uh, Joe Rushing, did you say state what else?
Address.
Okay, 7601 Canton Avenue. I just wanted to speak on the, the easement things in the alley with the sewers. Part of the issue is, is I look at all these other places and all their infrastructure is going out to the street. So we have a huge separation in, in infrastructure underground. In Lubbock, we've got it kind of crammed into an alley. And so that's where the problem lies because when we come in and start doing this, there's so much stuff that we have to miss. I'm not saying the city doesn't have to miss it, but we have to miss it. We have to use very expensive equipment. And one of the things I'm hearing is that we can do it for $1,000 or $1,500. Insane. You can't do it for $1,000 or $1,500. And, and I was thinking about it quite a bit. And I think the reason that we can't do that is like, the cost of our equipment, I don't know, and, and I'm going to look into it, and maybe y'all can answer this. I don't know if y'all are, have OSHA standards just like we do in the shoring and things of that nature. But we're having a hard time getting shoring in the ground to protect our men because everything is so crammed together. So when everything is so crammed together and you try to put shoring boxes, everything is in the way. We can't get the proper shoring. So what does that entail? You have to open the ground up very, very wide so that you're shored kind of at a 45-degree angle so nothing can come in on them. Well, in order to do that, you got to have these 100, 150, $200,000 tractors. No company in town is going to support that. And, and the other thing I wanted to say is plumbers, you know, they were talking about the amount that we're charging. Here's the problem. We're in this for profit. This is a business. I don't think the city of Lubbock is repairing them in the alley for a profit. And so when y'all start talking $1,000 or $1,500 to do a repair, I can't even hydroexcavate it for that. Now, we still got material. I've got man labor. Then I've got to call in, you know, inspections, wait on those. Then we've got to go back and backfill. I heard someone say we can backfill it in an hour and compact it. I'd sure like to show up and see how you do that. That's crazy. I, I've been involved with the city on this all the way, and everybody's been so helpful. I can make phone calls. And I mean, it's like instantly, people are getting back with me. We're kind of in a pickle here because of our infrastructure in the small easements. I, I've got buddies that are in Austin and Dallas and big, big areas that they can work in. You can get the shoring right in there. So, yes, I agree. I think John Turpin was the one saying that you need to get several estimates, and I agree with that. But this $1,000 to $1,500 to get them done in the alley is insane. Like, I, I, I can't even show up for that. So I just wanted to speak to that because I keep hearing these numbers and not even close. Thank you.
Joe, thank you. John King?
My name's John King. I'm at 9105 Huron Avenue. When the city decided to make the change the right away with the sewer taps and the rules, we saw an opportunity to increase our business. We saw an opportunity to take care of our customers. Because one of the things that I don't know if y'all realize is we go out and replace the sewer line, right? Sometimes there's a long lag between when we get the sewer line replaced and when the sewer tap can be replaced. sewer tap can be replaced. I've seen it as high as a week, I don't have real good data to tell you that, but that's a really frustrating thing for a homeowner, when you can't use the shower, the toilet, or any of that stuff. It's really frustrating for business, because now you have no revenue coming in while that period of time takes place. So what we did is, we went out and made a hundred and eighty thousand dollar investment, truck, hydrovac, backfill trailer, all the things that you need to do this job correctly, compaction tools. And really, where, where I think this makes sense for not only homeowners but for businesses, if you guys decide to continue to do it under, under the city's infrastructure, I can be behind that, but it doesn't make sense if we're out there and doing the tap, I mean, doing the sewer line, to not go ahead and replace the tap. So I hope you take some time and consider, and we're on the approved contractor list, we've gone out and gotten the bonds and all the tools that are necessary to make this happen. I hope that the city looks at that and says, okay, you know, there's, there's a monetary piece to this, and that really doesn't change. Whether you guys do it or we do it, there's a cost that's associated with it, and it's not inexpensive, and that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. Let's see here. Yeah, I think that's really the, the meat of the message, is if you guys can take the time to really evaluate this, I know this, the graph that I saw last time, and the percentage of time that takes away from other projects is, is significant. And, you know, we've been in business, I'm, I'm with Bruce Thornton Air Conditioning, we've been in business for fifty-two years, we have no plans of doing anything other than the best for our customers. That's how you stay in business for fifty-two years. And the, the quality piece of this is the other one, you know, you want somebody that's out there, I've heard the, the stories of the trash trucks running over. Well, if you don't do the proper compaction, that's gonna take place. And so I hope that the city would go out and look at this more holistically and take an opportunity to, to do better for the citizens of Lubbock. Any questions? All right. Thank y'all so much for having me.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. David Benitez?
My name's David Benitez. My address is six oh two East County Road fifty-five hundred, New Deal, but I'm employed here in Lubbock, and this pertains to us. And the only thing I have to add to what John said is, you know, one of the big issues was the cost to do the sewer line in the yard was seventeen hundred bucks, but the cost in the alley was three thousand. The reason the cost in the alley is so much is because the equipment required to do the proper digging, excavating in the alley costs so much. And that's the only reason it costs more to do the alley than it does the yard. And that's all I have really to add to what John said, but we sure hope that you guys think about it, you know, because it's not an easy decision. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jeff Reese?
I'll pass, thank you.
What if we wanted to ask you cross-examination questions? No, I'm just, I'm just kidding, that's all right. Kevin Watt?
Kevin Watt, fifty-seven oh nine Seventy-Ninth. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have on six point four-two on his own case.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's a second read under the consent agenda, so. Kevin is here available? Ms. Ward? Do I need to go through the instructions for you on how to do this?
No, sir.
All right.
Other than lowering the Michael, Michael Ward, fifty-four seventeen Eighth Street. I didn't have time to really go into the backup on a lot of these, but I was coming primarily for the public hearing, but it all sort of fits together in my world. The, I'm glad that finally something is being put on paper from the twenty forty plan extension for these neighborhoods that are sometimes neglected and sometimes used as, I call it sort of a front, to do other things. Any LCDC was a big similar type of thing, but it's, it's one thing to put it on paper and it's another thing to implement it, that we need to quit neglecting these parts of town and really do things that are meaningful and not all absorbed in overhead and salaries and that type of thing connected with it. So I followed a lot of the twenty forty plan and was glad to see something come of that, even though it's taken how many years now? Since twenty eighteen, basically. But it is still an important piece of this, I haven't had time to read the table of contents, but like I say, I've been in this for so many years that I know words can be so much and implementation is something else. And it's not so much about money as it is listening to neighborhoods and doing things that really improve things. And I didn't sign up for twenty fourteen and fifteen, but I was glad to see that there are some things going from the market Lubbock part, which I'm usually pretty critical of, but it's good that it's expanding to do things in some areas that didn't have any way to help small entrepreneurs. And I think that's a really important thing, so this one on East Nineteenth is a good step, and also on Thirty-Fourth Street, which is twenty sixteen. But just wanted to comment on those because I think it's really important for, to really pay attention to them, and it was a, that was a very expensive twenty forty plan, it cost probably a million dollars with all of the food and everything else involved, but I went to a lot of those. And this was sort of added as an afterthought, but I think it's very important that we're finally getting around to putting it on paper, and hopefully it will, I'll continue to monitor it, because I've watched these things for a long, long time, and I'll comment further on the rest of it in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Alma Johnson?
My name is Alma Gopi Johnson. I live at twenty-four twenty East Thirty First Street. And you know, it's just so funny, I am up here so fast, I haven't had a chance to get myself together. I'm here is kind of like a plea, I guess, for the bikers. I just glanced at it, 'cause usually I come to some of the meetings and I learn a whole lot of things. And one of the things that I am going to, I guess, be saying, please do not take a lane away from MLK at all. It's gonna sound really bad, I guess, for everybody, but who wants these bikes over there off MLK? Who live in those neighborhoods over there that are really riding the bikes, that they have to actually have all this space? I don't know, I don't see them, I do see some people, but I think you can ride your bike, I just see in McKenzie Park or somewhere, somewhere that you can ride your bike instead of on the street of MLK. There, there's heels and dips and everything everywhere, everywhere, but East Lubbock, I mean, you know, it seems to me we're already crowded, you know, it's like a dump ground for us anyway, so I think we can find another place for people to be able to ride their bikes and their other little vehicle things that they ride that are not necessarily on the street. But I just, I'm just pleading for, do not take a lane away from MLK. Just do not take a lane from MLK. The man that got up to do the prayer was a good prayer, and I hope that everybody do pray enough to think about the things that are, that you all have to consider, especially in my area. I am pleading for my area, because it seems like it's always, always something that everybody can stick over there on, in East Lubbock or take away. So I'm kind of pleading for that area. The sewer, I hope you all listen to the people that are talking about the sewer, because it's important to get that situation taken care of. It is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Anderson? Good afternoon.
My name is Calphal Anderson, twenty-nine fourteen youth. I'm here to address the Dumbarton Manhattan Plan. I'd like to first thank Mr. Bowlin and the council and team for their hard-working time that they placed and put into this plan. It is a good plan, except for two points. The group met with, members of the group met with Mr. Bowlin to review the plan, and we have two points that we lack for the council to reconsider. Page twenty, point five. We realize that the cemetery, grain elevator, and trains cannot be moved, but we're asking that the council allow the citizens to live, that live on the east side, to get a peaceful night's sleep. Therefore, we asking that the trains that idle, idle, that they park on the north side of the overpass on East Nineteenth. It's hard to go to sleep when you got a humming in your ear all night long. The next, it's page fifty-three, enhancing bike infrastructure by narrowing the path that goes across, the overpass that go across Thirty-Fourth and MLK. We only have one exit to, uh, Ninety-Fourth Street over there as it is. We have diesels, we have every type of vehicle going over that overpass. To narrow that lane, those lanes would be dangerous to those who are traveling back and forth over, uh, the, those two lanes. I'd like for you to consider this, because we on the east side feel like we have never heard. We come speak and we never heard. And we have really feel like we're tired of being ignored by the council. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, that's all we have for citizen comments. I'll now move to the minutes in five point one, since February twentieth to twenty-four EUB, the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four State of the City, the March fifth Regular City Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes under five point one?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia, Mr. Masco, the second. All in favor of approval of five point one, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We're going to now move to the consent agenda, we have a few items for discussion, so I will turn, first of all, start with six point six. This is a budget ordinance amendment on the second reading for the Water Capital Project Fund. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, item six point six and then six point six point one go together, the first is the budget amendment, the second is the utility agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation. Specifically, this is related to some waterline relocations associated with the new Loop, excuse me, Loop Eighty-Eight. It is called Segment Three D by Tech dot. For us, it is called Between Frankfurt and Milwaukee Avenue. Unique program, these were all originally set up back when the Loop was first announced. We front the cost to make these relocations, in this case, in the amount of one point nine five million, and then when completed, Tech dot reimburses us. In this case, we will get one point nine million back. So we do have a net cost, but it's very small, roughly seven percent of the total project. And I'd be pleased to take any questions.
All right, I think that covers six six and six point six one, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Counsel, have any questions, and Mr. Atkinson on those items? Ms. Joy?
Uh, there's forty-eight thousand dollars plus that's coming from the water cap, from a water capital project, is that correct?
From the Capital Project Fund, yes.
Okay. And was that specifically set aside for this project, or was that just a water fund that's, you've been accumulating funds in through the years?
It's for this project. We've actually had a number of those in the capital list for a period of years.
So you anticipated this would come from that fund?
Yes.
Okay. How long does it take Tech dot to reimburse us?
We're not sure. We don't have all the reimbursements back from the first phases that were done.
And what might we do about that?
We continue to wait till they close those projects and then push on them to do that. We, we will get it, I have no doubt. It's just, I can't tell you the timeframe in which we will.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions on six six, six six one? All right, we'll now move to six point one two, this is a finance resolution regarding publication and posting of notice of intention to issue some general obligation bonds. Mr. Atkinson? Ah, Mr. Kostalich?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So item six point one two is a notice of intent to publish in the newspaper for our annual issuance of, of bonds. This is gonna be both your general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation. These were the projects that, back in, you know, early August and through the budget approval process, we talked through these, we've, we've outlined which projects we're going to undertake this year that will require debt financing. So when this is, this is us now bringing this forward and starting the legal process to issue these bonds. This does not authorize us to go out for bonds, this does not approve of, of issuing any bonds whatsoever at this point. This is simply the first step in that, that issuance process set up by state statute that says we've got to publish it for the, the citizens for at least forty-five days before we can come back to council for an ordinance to actually move forward with the issuance of these bonds. Mayor Counsel, I'll pause there and take any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions on six point one two? Ms. Joy?
Yes, what caught my eye on this, I understood the general obligation bonds that need to be issued, but the revenue certificates of obligation caught my eye, because those are what we call COs, which in the past have been scrutinized. However, this is not to be paid from general fund, this is to be paid from the enterprise fund for which this money is to be used for the projects, is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am. These are, these are what you call those double-barrel pledges. So the, the revenue of that system is what actually pays it back. Now, because they are not independently rated, they can't, these systems can't issue their own debt, they do have to have a, a small, like, five hundred dollar pledge of property taxes. It doesn't mean that property taxes are gonna touch these at all, that's just the, the cosigner on the loan. It is the actual revenues that, that pay this debt.
What do you mean a five hundred dollar?
It's just like, like cosigning, like a parent cosigning a, a car loan for their, their child. There's not actually any money, it's the, it's the backstop in case something goes completely wrong with that system.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kostalich. There's no other questions on six point one two. I believe we'll move to six point two eight, is the engineering resolution on the semi-annual report. Is Mr. Keenum on?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'll start with that, if you don't mind. I would recognize Mike Keenum, city engineer, is in the audience, as is Mr. Chris Berry, and Mr. Berry is your current chair of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. So the item before you is to receive the required semi-annual report submitted to you by this committee. The report, in this case, has one statement and two recommendations. The statement reads as, "The roadway impact fee is being collected in accordance with state law and with city code. Recommendation number one is to make minor modifications to Ordinance Forty-one point zero five dot zero zero two C, and this is merely to clarify language with its original intent, and this is related to infill development for affordable housing, which this council has considered and approved." Counsel, that revision will follow later. Step one is the report and the receipt thereof, and then second will be the, the ordinance. The second recommendation is that no other changes are recommended to your impact fee program at this time. And then I'll add an editorial note, Counsel, you are starting to see the benefit of having such a program. You're recently awarded through Tech dot because of the Metropolitan Planning Organization dollars, but the Upland Project Sixty-Sixth to Eighty-Second, which is a complicated project, it has a railroad track, obviously it has two intersections, Marsha Sharp, and a lot of drainage, it's going to be a beautiful five-lane road when it gets started. Two different service areas are covered by that one-mile stretch, and they are both contributing to making that a fully funded project, which it is.
Ms. Joy?
Say, they recommend no other changes, you're talking about, on the, on the streets right now are, what are we assessing, on fifty percent, is that right?
Well, it's, it's fifty percent of fifty percent, so it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent. And then there is zero percent for water or sewer, any of those projects?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Again, Mr. Atkinson, we're just receiving that report, no action on that, just the receipt of that committee's report today, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, any other questions on six point two eight? All right, seeing none, I think that is all of the pulls that we had, so I would ask for a motion to approve six point one through six point four-nine.
I'd go for it.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, the second by Ms. Martinez Garcia. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, six point one through six point four-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We're now moving to our board appointments. Counsel, as we've done in the past, if the consent of counsel, I will read through the board name and then those that will be appointed, with no objection. If there is an objection, please let me know. Just a point, we're going to move the Community Development and Services Board to our next meeting, I believe, in two weeks. And so we'll start off at the top with Animal Services Advisory Board. We have a recommendation to reappoint Deborah Deary to replace Lisa Gillum with Judy Tarwater from District Four, and also to replace Dr. Taylor Chatten with Dr. Ashley Barney, who's an associate veterinarian at Live Oak Animal Hospital South. Next, we have the Audit and Investment Committee. We have a recommendation to reappoint Brad Odell and Teresa Clark to that committee. Moving to the Board of Health, we have a recommendation to reappoint Paulette, Paulette Rosnick, and then to replace Cameron, Dr. Cameron Herring with Brandon Focken. Next, moving to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, we have a recommendation to reappoint Chris Berry. Chris, again, thanks for your service and being here today. And then to replace Catherine Salter and Irene Franks with Allison Blaylock and Thomas Next, moving to the key Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee, we had a recommendation to reappoint Christina Reed, and then two replacements for Marian Lawson and Valerie Duval with Jennifer Roseberry and Rodney Shay Benson. Next, we have recommendations to reappoint Garrett Haley and Krista Jones on the Lake Allen Henry Board of Appeals. on the Lake Allen Henry Board of Appeals. Moving on to Parks and Recreation Board, we had a recommendation to reappoint Michael Henson, and then to replace Gwendolyn Titus and William Anderson with Ella O'Neil and Morgan Guffey. On the Public Transit Advisory Board, we had a recommendation to reappoint Sandra Chatham and Joanne Lee, and replace Michael Board with Perla Sosa. And finally, our Veterans Advisory Committee, we had a recommendation for reappointments of Jeremy Sedano, Scott Anderson, Gregory Ricks, and Clemmie Payne Jr. All right, counsel, having heard those names read into the record and taken down, is there a motion to approve those reappointments and new appointments? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of 7.1, the board appointments read into the record, the reappointments and appointments, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, we're now moving to public hearings. We will start with 7.2 and then move to 7.3. These are guidelines and criteria. Brianna, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mayor. See if I can make this full screen for you. Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. Nice to be with you today. Item 7.2 and 7.3 are approval of updated tax abatement guidelines, both for industrial tax abatement projects and commercial tax abatement projects. They do both require a public hearing. I do have a presentation for both, so I can do those together or separately, whichever you prefer, Mayor. Okay. Item 7.2 refers to our industrial tax abatement guidelines. These were most recently updated in March of 2022, and the state statute does require that we look at these and adopt new guidelines every two years. And so this was our first available council meeting to do that with you all. There were not significant changes to the statute in our most recent legislative session, and so the majority of the changes that you will see in this policy are strictly grammatical. There are no, no large changes to the policy that you approved two years ago. So just for our new council members' purposes, and then also for the public's, I'll just kind of hit some highlights on what's included in these policies, and then be happy to answer any questions that you have. So again, for item 7.2, we're talking strictly industrial projects. The maximum term for a tax abatement for a project of this type is 10 years. That is set by state law, that is not a local guideline. That is set by the state. We are able to do tax abatement incentives anywhere up to 10 years. And so we've had several projects, especially in the recent past, where we don't maximize this incentive. But 10 is the maximum that the state will allow. Eligible properties are real property, tangible personal property, onsite raw materials, works in progress, and supplies and tools. So really, best way to think about this is buildings and things inside of buildings that don't move are eligible property. Things like furniture and fixtures, land underneath the building, things like that are ineligible for tax abatement. And then I've got a list here of the types of companies that are eligible for this incentive. Easiest way to think about this is this, these are the types of companies that our Economic Development Alliance focuses on. So they're the types of companies that are producing what we call primary jobs. So that's your manufacturing, distribution, warehouse, those types of things. La Prino is a great example of one of these companies that you all have considered in the recent past. Non-eligible properties, this is a list of those items, but we just kind of talked about that. And then the location, I wanted to point out, these incentives are only allowable in an enterprise zone, which is an area that's designated by the state of Texas. Or if we consider a project that's not in an enterprise zone, we are required to make a local reinvestment zone, to designate a reinvestment zone to be able to allow a tax abatement in that area. And so your most recent example of that was when we did DuraLine, their tax abatement. The Lubbock Business Park is no longer in the state's enterprise zone program, and so we did have to designate a local reinvestment zone for them to be eligible. Eligibility requirements for these companies are listed on this page. So a company must be modernizing or expanding an existing facility, constructing a new facility, one of those two, and also be a producer, manufacturer, distributor of goods, of which 50% leave the city of Lubbock. Our criteria for application is for a new company coming to Lubbock, the project will add at least $1 million in real property improvements, $2 million in new personal property, which what we typically see with a project like this is new equipment, or 25 new permanent jobs. For an existing company, the requirements are slightly smaller. $500,000 in real property improvements, $1 million in new personal property, or 15 new permanent jobs. And then the qualifier here just simply states that just because we have these guidelines doesn't mean that the council is obligated to allow for tax abatement incentives. Happy to answer any questions on industrial guidelines before we move on to commercial, if you have any. Keep going.
Let's go ahead and move to commercial, and then we can take questions if there are any before we open the public hearings.
Okay. For commercial projects, there's a few changes that I wanted to note in this policy. Again, no significant changes at the legislature in our most recent session, so I've made some grammatical changes. The real area significance is in the enterprise zone areas. The current guidelines, which are the guidelines that were adopted in 2022, were based off of the state enterprise zones that were designated after the 2010 census. We've since completed the 2020 census. The state has now had time to go back and redesignate enterprise zones. And so some of those zones have changed. They've gone away, in the case of X Fab. X Fab was in an enterprise zone when we did previous tax abatements. They no longer are, so our most recent, we had to create a reinvestment zone. And so you'll see on a map on the next slide, some of those changes, by and large, the boundaries are still the same. But did want you to know that there are some changes to the zones in the policy strictly based on the new designations by the state. The main difference in the industrial and the commercial abatements is the length of time. So for commercial tax abatements, we are only allowed to do those up to a five-year term. And these companies are your retail, service, and office industries. So service being hotel or restaurant, as an example. Their eligible property is also improvements to real property, so buildings, and then tangible person, tangible personal property like equipment. And their non-eligible property list is the same as what you see in your industrial guidelines. On your next slide, you do have the enterprise zones that we are recommending we utilize this program within. So you've got the 2020 census, which are your 2022 guideline zones. And then the new, the new zones are on the right-hand side of your slide. And so when we looked at this, we did not add or take away anything that the state did not add or take away. Similar to our industrial guidelines, eligibility requirements are that a company must modernize or expand an existing facility, construct a new facility, and clearly add to the economic base. And really, the qualifier here is that any jobs that they are claiming as part of the application for the tax abatement must be new jobs to the Lubbock community. They cannot essentially create a duplicate business to something that already exists here and then take employees from that business and count those towards their job creation numbers. Job criteria and investment criteria for commercial projects, $100,000 in new investment to a building or equipment, and then 10 new permanent jobs, 30% of which are people from the Lubbock community. And then same qualifiers on this, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, counsel, why don't everybody's consent, why don't we go ahead and do the public hearings? And then that we can have Brianna available if we have questions or any of the questions through the public hearing need to be addressed. Everybody good with that? And if you recall, 7.2 is industrial, 7.3 is criteria for commercial. Amy, Mitch, any reason why we can't open up the public hearing as to both 7.2 and 7.3? All right. Similar in vain, just one has different industrial versus commercial. All right, so knowing that, at this time, the Texas Tax Code requires a public hearing be conducted by the city council in regard to the proposed adoption of guidelines and criteria for industrial and commercial tax abate agreements. So at this time, I will open the public hearing as to agenda items 7.2 and 7.3. Anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regard to the proposed guidelines, you can step forward. When I, if you step forward, state your name again and your address, you have time to make your statement. And then we'll start off with any opposed to agenda items 7.2 and 7.3.
I would never have gotten out in this weather, except this needed to be addressed. Pretty much a history as much as anything else. I came back in 1981 from meeting Robert Woodson, who was one of the original civil rights leaders, but was doing a lot of self-help things for small people getting started in business and so forth. And it wasn't even legal in Texas, but I spent a whole afternoon with Larry Cunningham, who was the city manager, Jim Bertram, who was his assistant, and Sandy Ogletree was the head of community development. It was not legal in Texas, as I said, but I talked about it. And because I was working with a lot of people, small entrepreneurs, minority people primarily, but they were living on a property that wasn't very valuable. But it made sense to have something short-term because a lot of these people were being redlined at the banks at the time and were having a hard time getting started in business. And of course, my original idea was probably five years declining each year and so forth for them. And so I kept following it and pushing it, and when it was finally adopted, it kind of made, took pause because it didn't seem quite what needed to be. But the first project that I remember was to move a fast food restaurant from one side of the interstate to the other. And I followed this through all the years, and Cheryl Brock kept me up on each of the things. In fact, I have a current chart that wouldn't fit even on a legal-sized sheet of paper. But as far as I can tell, there has never been a minority-owned business that got a tax abatement. In many cases, they've created, in the areas, like she was pointing out, which helps what I'm talking about, but basically putting, making things into enterprise zones, a lot of different ones over lots of years. They haven't been using it a lot in the last few years, but there's three of you still on the council that supported this Monsanto project, which they bought, the city bought 150 acres, told me to be quiet because they were paying so much taxes that it was going to be worth it. Next thing I knew, they were made into an enterprise zone, and through several other steps, they were given 100% tax abatement on absolutely everything, including inventory, FFE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and on inventory. And what happens on most of these, and this was one of them as well, there's LITA incentives that are stacked, often we're putting in infrastructure, all of these kinds of things as well. But also, then paying for any employees hired, so much per employee and so forth. And I was amazed that this is how it went down. But they gave Monsanto 100% tax abatement on all of those things for 10 years, which has been from 20, I guess, 2019 by the time it got done. It was 2017 and 18 in there. But that will not pay out until 2027. And the amount total estimated on the chart is $5,523, $23,714. It's, it's, it's a poster job because there really wasn't that much created. The only thing that I ever heard was that we could plant our flag as being the cottonseed capital of the world. And I know it has some implications and help from tech research and other things, but that's not the purpose of it to begin with. And the areas that were involved often varied some too. But I know the La Prino thing is going to be great, but here again, it's not even started until approximately 2027. So I likely won't be on the planet before it would come back on tax rolls. But it's also geared to be 100%. What's happening is, on a lot of these, we're buying land, giving it, deeding it over to these companies, and then stacking the incentives, like I say, other things that are not abatements. Because the abatement has another component to it that most people aren't aware of, and I had to confirm that it was that way because the county doesn't keep up with it. But the county and the hospital district and the water district all participate. So we're doubling, if not more, the city's contribution to these things. And it's, it's just, the ones that are still in effect are united supermarkets, warehouse, which they created a enterprise zone for the, and of course Monsanto. La Prino doesn't start yet, but in the end, they're estimating, and of course, it may go up from this, but at least a minimum of 19,940,000 or so in the 10 years on La Prino. And it has lots of other good spin-off things. But when you start stacking the incentives and then lessening the tax base because it's just shifting the tax burden to the rest of us, and a lot of us don't have a way, particularly retirees, that don't really have a way to add to our income based on the rapid growth that comes from all of these things. And so it's, it requires a lot more infrastructure, a lot more public safety, a lot of other things that's getting out of the, strictly the abatement part. But because the county also goes along with this, we're losing probably double what they say. But the total of the ones that are currently, and X Fab's not a huge problem. It was on equipment, additional things, and it's a five-year declining each year. And so it only was, oh, about a couple of, maybe 3 million, close to 3 million. But to the other, all of them added together that we're in right now are just shy of $29 million that taxes are changed from that. But I just think it's gotten totally away from what its original intent was. And as I said a little bit earlier, it seems like sometimes the areas that are involved are in north and east Lubbock. And it's sort of used as a front, in a way, to help huge corporations sometimes. Like Monsanto is not even a good company to start with. La Prino has lots of other good spin-off things. But I hope you'll reconsider some of these. And I know you can't necessarily buy in the next council, but I would urge all of you to reconsider how much we're using these or that it's there, and it's not even part of the LITA incentives or the infrastructure and all these other things that we're spending money on. So I just think it's something that needs to get back to its original purpose as much as possible, and pretty limited at that because we don't need to... as possible, and pretty limited at that, because we don't need to keep on just pretending that everything's fine. And a lot of these things, like I mentioned earlier, the NEL CDC thing, when it came back before the council, and it wasn't this particular thing, but it's indicative, and the PowerPoint that was brought to the council in 2012 was basically to redo downtown Lubbock because that was going to really help North and East Lubbock. And I don't think that that's appropriate either. So finally, we've gotten NEL CDC, the money from the oil and gas, that was going, at least 25% of it was going into downtown Lubbock, and now it's back in community development where it should have always been, and helping some homeowners bring their houses up to code and do small repairs and that type of thing. So I didn't mean to make a long presentation, but it was important to know the history on it and its original intent and how it's been diverted. And I've spoken out on it several times in the interim, but just keep that in mind. I think this is part of finally paying some attention like we're doing with those other items, and just watching that we're not pretending that things are for one thing and they're actually going to, people who I don't think really need a whole lot of incentives, but the bribery and extortion game is alive and well in Texas, and businesses demand some of these kinds of things in order to come here. And I know it's competitive, but we've got to look out for Lubbock first and all of our citizens. Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is still open to those wishing to speak in opposition to 7.2, 7.3. All right, seeing none, any here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Items 7.2 or 7.3, you may approach at this time. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Items 7.2 and 7.3. Counsel, I remind you that we will, well, let's go ahead and just take a vote on 7.2, and then we can take up 7.3 separately. Is there a motion to approve 7.2?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, is there any discussion on the acceptance of proposed guidelines? And again, I'll remind counsel, this is just the adoption of criteria. We're not doing any abatements, we're not voting on any abatements. That will be for future councils if there's anything ever presented. This is simply requirements for us to have guidelines and criteria in place. Ms. Joy?
Just a question, I think. Yeah, probably, but I do think Ms. Ward makes some good points, and is there any reason why we cannot include in these guidelines more about, less than 100%? Because when they're presented to us, and I've had them presented different ways, sometimes they are declining abatements, which I'm much more in favor of we're going to do. So is there any way to make a requirement that that be included? That it's not 100% that we very much encourage declining abatements, because I do believe that that's more appropriate as these businesses get up and get running over that 10-year period, or five-year, whichever, if you're talking about commercial?
I think the council has the ability to add that language in. If you all want to, you could specify a requirement or specify that you give preferential treatment to certain types of projects over other types of projects.
I don't like the word preferential.
Me neither, I can't say it.
Simply because I don't think that's it. It might have more to do with the size of the project, for example. La Prino is, was at 1.800 billion, and I think now it's a billion. And so I think we need to look at it from that standpoint, so that it's just not, okay, it's 100%. I don't agree with that. I think it needs to be, and I won't be around to finish it off, but I think Ms. Ward's correct.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brown, I'm kind of along with Ms. Joy on this. Ms. Ward kind of kicked in some old times for me, and I remember that the Monsanto project was my very first time voting in regards to tax abatement, and I said no, because I was not in favor of them. And I think that, I'll accept this in the fact that it is a guideline, but I think there ought to be some additional pieces in that that allow us, like, of course, for sure, the declining of the abatement, the amount, and just want to have a little bit more guidance, if we're going to have it, to say that we don't have to, or something that says we don't have to necessarily consider it for a certain type of businesses. I don't know if I'm reaching on that, but I'm kind of like Ms. Joy and Ms. Ward as well. I think that there are times for it, and there are times that we get to say that that's not needed in this case. So I think we have felt, I feel like we felt the sting of Monsanto's packing up and leaving town on us. So I would, I'd like to just have a little bit more, what am I trying to say? I can't think of it. Flexibility in how we can assess the abatements. And I know this one is particularly for commercial.
Industrial.
Industrial. And then the five years for the commercial. That's what I like to say. I just like to see that it indicates that it can be declining percentages, or maybe there are certain types of businesses that we may not even look at. What those are, I don't know. I think it's up for conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. McBrayer?
Yeah, I would again echo the comments that are made. I think it needs to be more in the sense that it's a partnership between us and the businesses we bring in, rather than a bribe, if that's the word Ms. Ward wanted to use, to get them. Lubbock's a good place for people to come, and we want the right businesses here, and we want the right kind of growth, but we want people who are going to partner with us and be here long-term. And I think the declining, using a declining model is probably better to accomplish that. So I too would say that's something we need to try to look for. One other question I had is, what percentage of the abatements that we use, and you may not know the answer to this question, are industrial versus the commercial? Do you know?
Industrial much more often than commercial. I have not done a commercial tax abatement since I've been here. That's in the last five years.
That's what I thought. I've never, I don't think I've recalled one. Okay.
In fact, United, I believe, was the most recent one that we utilized the commercial program for. And again, that's before my time.
Thank you.
And I guess to that point, Mr. McBrayer too, and Ms. Patterson-Harris, Ms. Joy, I think 10, specifically in 10, it says that the Lubbock City Council shall have the total discretion, right, as to whether tax abatement is to be granted. And it doesn't say partial. I mean, it's total discretion still is maintained within these guidelines. So I think basically, this is a very, very broad guideline that gives the council total discretion to do any of those things, which then keeps the conversation.
Including saying no.
Yeah, including absolutely saying no, which needs to happen at times. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, I missed your button down the...
That's okay, Mayor. I still like you a lot.
See, didn't see that green...
I just want to thank Michael because, I mean, I was around for some of that. You know, I was probably like 12 years old, but I was around, I'm just kidding, I was a little bit older than that, 18. But nevertheless, it's a great history, and I think that Michael makes some very good points, but, you know, while I echo that, I do appreciate that the council still has a lot of input. Like you said, we could even say no if we wanted to, but do we not have, not even one minority business that has had an abatement or received an abatement that you know of?
I'll have to look at that and get back to you. That's not a question that we ask on our tax abatement application, and so I would need to get some additional data.
But I think the guidelines do say something like that, right? I mean, when it was, no? Okay, that's all I needed to know. I appreciate the great message. Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
I think the current language that you have in here is used against us. In other words, when, let's assume that LITA starts talking to a group, and they look at these guidelines, and they say, well, we can get up to 10%. All I'm asking is that there be a little bit more in the guidelines that give us some help, when we don't necessarily want to say no completely, but we want to say a lesser amount. I'm not sure how you do that, but I do think that gets used against us because the businesses coming in see that 10, and, you know, and they automatically start asking for that. And then sometimes there's negotiations about declining and so forth. The other thing I wanted to say is, I tried really hard to get La Prino in my district in northwest Lubbock, and we couldn't get enough land for the problem that they had, which was where do we put the water that comes out of the making of the cheese? I tried really, really hard because I wanted it there. That didn't happen. As it turns out, I think it's going to be a benefit to everybody because that water that's processed at the plant's going to go back into Lake Six, which ultimately will go into Lake Seven, which water is a big, big issue. And I will say this, that a lot of the projects that are coming to Lubbock are looking for water. So some of our leverage is water, to a point, more so, I think, than abatements. But I don't serve on LITA. I don't have a voice in that, other than to approve or disapprove of what they bring to us in the way of projects.
So we do have investment and job criteria in the policy that's a blanket. So one thing the council might consider is adding additional categories if, you know, for a 10-year abatement, for example, you have to have an investment of this dollar amount, and then that declines as the project size declines. So that may be an opportunity to, yeah.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, I'm glad you brought it up, Ms. Brown, because I think that that'd be some good information to have and designate the different levels, in addition to adding that either declining or 100% or whatever, some of the options. And I think, because just looking at this, we could kind of be held right to what it says, and just, and some industrialized businesses coming and expecting something that really ends up us giving them the whole kid and caboodle. So I think if we have those things before us, where we're looking at the guidelines, and I say me, city council members, when they're looking at that things being considered, that they look at all the options that they can do. I think grouping some of those items, like you stated, certain percentages, as long as you have, you bring this number of employees, and that's this amount of investment. I think that that would work well, and then still give the council the ability to adjust it if they so choose, but if you have grouped the things together, that might work well and work, find itself being approved a lot more often by the council and not given away so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. I don't know, maybe I'm, I want to restate what you said earlier. I think I'm in line with Ms. Patterson-Harris. I'm really willing to accept these because I think we need these guidelines in place now, but I do think that maybe it's, have some further presentation to councils in the future, or the next council, as far as what some possible guidelines, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir. And in your soul... I would that we have that information to come back to the council before we make a decision on it, rather than just accepting, accepting what we have here. Is, do you think it would be possible for us to get it for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is there a timing on this? We have two weeks. So...
Yeah. If I could maybe speak to a couple of the points.
Yeah, Ms. Atkinson.
I'll do number two first. Councilmember Patterson-Harris brought it back up. Council, note that if these are adopted today, for the two-year life of this set of guidelines, it requires a three-quarter vote to amend. So if we're looking to possibly add language, I might suggest that you do delay this action item until the next meeting, which we can accommodate.
Yes.
The other point, and certainly folks that are asking are going to push for everything that's on the table. I think it's important to have that table because you don't know what is coming or not, but you might take a little comfort. You've got language already in here that specifically, the adoption of the guideline and the criteria by the Lubbock City Council does not, does not limit the discretion of the council to decide whether to enter into a specific tax abatement agreement. It also talks about, I've hit the button and lost the page, but the second one that I was going to read to you says, "There is no creation of any right under these guidelines or agreements by an applicant." So I think maybe on that side, we're covered. It's more trying to wordsmith a little bit on options. The options are included, they're not weighted.
Ms. Joy?
I agree about whatever changes we're going to make, if any, let's get it done in the next two weeks. But I think the message also should go to the Public Economic Development Alliance, that because it says what it says, doesn't mean that we have to, but I will tell you, and everybody in here that knows much about development will tell you, there is a lot of pressure brought on the council because it says, oh, you can go up to 10. That's what I mean when I say they can use that against you, just like it says, you know, we can limit them, but there's a lot of pressure to bear. And I think that's something that needs to be also communicated to the LITA.
I think these are guidelines, and I personally prefer very, very broad guidelines to give council discretion. This gives council a ton of discretion. So I think approving this and moving forward is what my preference would be. I'm hearing Ms. Patterson-Harris say she would like to put this off. Is there, do you have a motion to postpone? A second by Ms... Yeah. Tap, tap in there, Mitch.
There we go. Thank you. Am I in?
You're on.
Yes. I would recommend having the motion state specifically a postponement until the date certain, next regular council meeting.
23rd, okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, on Items 1.2, 7.2, 7.3, be postponed until our next council meeting, being April the 23rd of 2024.
All right, I think Mr. McBrayer seconded that the first time. All right, so if, we've got a motion and a second. Mitch, would that require a reposting of a public hearing, or would that just move straight to a vote?
Sir, you would not have to have the public hearing again. You would just take up the resolution as that item had been postponed. However, let me also add, I think, Courtney can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we just had the first item up with a motion and a second, but I think this motion had both items, and so maybe...
Do I need to separate them?
Well, they're separated right now.
Well, I can change that.
Under the initial motion.
I can pull them together.
Okay. Great.
So I guess at this time, we had a motion to approve 7.2. I would ask for a motion to approve 7.3. Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, we have 7.2 and 7.3 in front of the council. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I do have a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move that we take Items 7.2, 7.3, and move them, postpone them until the next council meeting of 20, I mean, April 23rd, 2024, and that the suggested recommendations be considered and brought forward to the council at that time.
All right, Mr. McBrayer has a second. All right. So again, to the question for discussion, this would not require another posting of a public hearing. Would this be a presentation of a possible amendment to the guidelines and then a vote on those guidelines? Mitch?
That's the way I would envision it, is present them again with amendments attached or presented to them.
Okay, so council had an opportunity to... So council had the opportunity to present further amendments, either more restrictive or less, whatever they propose.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to postpone by Ms. Patterson-Harris? All right. All in favor of approval of the motion by Ms. Patterson-Harris, please say aye.
Aye.
All against? Nay. All right. Motion carries four to three. All right. We will postpone 7.2 and 7.3 until April 23rd. Council have options at that time to provide possible amendments to that, which we can bring up on April 23rd. All right. Now we are moving to 7.4 and 7.5. I think we'll take these up individually, but I think we'll have Wilson, who's presenting, bring these up together as they are relevant, 7.4 and 7.5. All right. Wilson, you're up. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, thank you so much for having me. I'm very excited to be before you today to present our first two neighborhood plans. Oh. We have a long planning document and I got to get to the actual start of my portion. So in the comprehensive plan, it did lay out to begin a neighborhood planning program and to quote, "To authorize a series of a city-initiated master plans for eastern and northern Lubbock neighborhoods. These plans should include individual vision and action plans developed by or in participation with each neighborhood. I was brought onboard in 2021 to help start this process." On October 12th, 2021, I presented in front of council and a subcommittee was created with Mayor Pro Tem Patterson-Harris and former council members Juan Chodas and Jeff Griffith. The goal of this subcommittee was to pick the first neighborhoods and how we were going to do that. For this to be more data-driven, the subcommittee got... Had me look at several key performance indicators, and upon gathering this data, we were able to pick our first four neighborhoods. These key performance indicators that we used was the homeownership rate, the poverty rate, the number of building permits within that past year, median home value, the unsafe structures per 100 structures, and the number of nonviolent crimes per 1,000 residents. That's just to normalize those numbers. And then the number of healthcare facilities in the area, within a three-mile radius. I'll get back to that in just a moment. Using these criteria, and I want to reiterate, as I did that last council member... Meeting, that there is no bad neighborhood in Lubbock. The reason we chose these neighborhoods was strictly by these criteria. So the first four neighborhoods in order, the Dunbar Manhattan Heights neighborhood in East Lubbock, the Jackson and Mahon neighborhoods combined, Parkway Cherry Point, and Arnett Benson. At the same time, the... Our Public Health Department received a grant for community and neighborhood health. They gave us $250,000 of that so we could hire consultants to kind of kickstart and be able to do two plans at once. After the bidding process, the planning department hired Rayo Planning in September 2022. So I'm going to kind of go over very, very quickly just to remind you what the boundaries of these neighborhoods are. The Dunbar Manhattan Heights neighborhood is just south of 19th Street, East 19th Street, Loop 289, and Southeast Drive, kind of creating a triangle. The Jackson and Mahon neighborhoods, Erskine Street would be the northern boundary, Avenue Q and University, east and west, and the Marshall Sharp Freeway to the south. The Clovis Highway divides these two neighborhoods, with Jackson being on the southern portion and Mahon being in the north. These are both small neighborhoods with very similar demographics and being right next to each other. We felt that it was just appropriate to work with these neighborhoods together. This kind of lays out the different phases throughout our planning process. Educating the public, looking at the existing conditions, creating the vision with the neighborhood, sending a survey to all the members of the neighborhoods, presenting our findings with the neighborhoods, and then in each neighborhood at a public space, we had a very large party. For the recommendations, it really came down to three themes that came out of all these public meetings. Neighborhood vitality and beautification, transportation, infrastructure, and pedestrian safety, and commercial and retail development. Underneath each is a series of goals. Underneath the goals, a series of strategies. Underneath those, within the plan, a series of sub-strategies. So I'm really just going to hit the goals with you here. I know you have the plans before you. The first goal, under neighborhood vitality and beautification, to increase and maintain affordable housing options, and then to enhance neighborhood character and quality of life. Under transportation, infrastructure, and pedestrian safety, the goal is enhance multimodal transportation options. And under commercial and retail development, to promote and enhance commercial opportunities. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval on both plans, eight to zero. And if adopted, we will begin inflammation... Implementation on these plans immediately, using funds from our capital improvement project fund. Right now, that fund is sitting at just over $477,000. Thank you so much, and I am happy to take any questions.
Wilson, I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
To both Ms. Johnson and Ms. Anderson's points on the bike lanes, I happen to very much agree with their assessments of some of these. And I know that a lot of the bike lanes are in the plans. I've talked to people that are actually bike riders and those that use Strata or other devices to plot out their bike lanes. And I don't see many people using those bike lanes. And if the people in the neighborhood are not really in favor of that, what's... Is that a solution moving forward? That is not something to be implemented or maybe more thoroughly studied? Or we... Again, we're just accepting this plan today, but that doesn't mean things can't change, correct?
Exactly. And I... To that point, I... When I presented to the neighborhoods in depth on these, I was in a position where I could make no long... I could no longer make changes to these plans. So I invited them to come here and tell you that they passed this information along to me. They said, "We don't think it's going to work," and I passed it on to the council members. Our thought process for that, really, they're connected issues but two separate issues, one being the bridge that leads over 34th Street and the railroad, the other being MLK itself. MLK itself, really, it's the lack of connection from the neighborhood to anywhere. There is no sidewalk network that completes, that actually connects from the neighborhood going to the park and beyond. There is about an eight-to-10-foot gap in sidewalk on a hill. So there is no way, except for walking in the road, for any pedestrian, any biker, anything except to get on a major thoroughfare. The bridge, that was kind of an interesting issue of... We know that bridge is dangerous and that there is no way for people to get across that bridge. There's no sidewalks, bike infrastructure, and it's a very steep bridge. For us to add any of this, we would have to basically reconstruct the bridge or add a whole new area to meet ADA requirements because it's too steep. So there's no way to add sidewalks. In a meeting with Public Works Engineering, we were trying to put our heads together, what can we do here? The best solution we could come up with, and it's something the neighborhood has now informed us, informed me a couple of weeks ago, they don't think it's going to work. So it's something we can take out, is to add bike lanes, reduce the size of the road, lower the speed limit on the road so that trucks aren't just absolutely flying, and to add a safe space on either side, an actual buffered bike lane. If this is something council feels that we should take out, absolutely take out. I am not tied to any of the recommendations in here. That's kind of a little bit of background for you, and I do... I absolutely do appreciate you coming to the meeting, sharing this with council.
Well, and I think, again, to me, these are fluid, and that's what I would like to see, is continued input. And I know that's what you'll do, Wilson, but continued input on these. And so if it's not working, if it's not workable, then it needs to be changed. I kind of look at this almost like the aforementioned guidelines and criteria for tax abatement. It's very broad, but you have the ability, and future councils with the neighborhood discussion and input have the ability to change it. And I just want us to pay attention to those, especially when it's removing lanes or being more restrictive or things that would cost the taxpayer actual money to change when it's really not necessary. So I appreciate your hard work on these. I'm in favor of approving of both these plans. I just think we need to keep it fluid, and I think we need to listen when they speak. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things, and I'll... If you'll stay there, Wilson, and I may call for Ms. Anderson and Ms. Johnson. I'm not sure who else may be back there, to make sure that I'm hitting the right target. And with regard to the MLK bridge that finds its way over 34th Street, and it has the two lanes on each direction, so four, a total of four lanes. And I guess a few years before your coming onboard, there was a walk and bike proposal that was presented to the members of the MPO. And one of the concerns that they had was also the fact that there was not any way for pedestrians to make their way safely over that roadway. Some of the recommendations that they presented had nothing to do with reducing the lanes, but there was a concern of somehow... And speaking with Mr. Atkinson as well, for myself, trying to find a way to bring some type of pedestrian walk along or how to... Mr. Atkinson can speak to that. But to somehow create a path, a safe path over, if that's adding the space to the east and west of the bridge for walking, because one of the concerns that we had during the time where we said, what was it? Walk to school? Okay. Or walk or bike to school during a school year, that those students who attend Dunbar or even Irvin don't have a safe path to make their way to the north side to attend those schools. So it is always... It's been something that has been brought up several times over the past, I'll say, at least six years that I recall. There's been an ask, trying to... And one of the issues was trying to find funding that would help do that because it would require a great amount of work and a great amount of funding to make that happen. I believe you stated that there was concern that there's no direct path for the citizens to get from the top of the hill down to the... To the lake area? Is that what... Is that what I hear?
Yes, ma'am. There is no... There's two separate sidewalks that do not quite meet.
Okay. Help me with that location.
That would be as you go on MLK up the hill on the left-hand side with that retaining wall, the sidewalk stops with the retaining wall and the other sidewalk continues on the top of the hill, and there is no connection between the two points.
I thought there was a... There is a sidewalk where the mural is on that retainer wall.
Yes, ma'am. But I did go by to double-check this because I remember hearing this. That sidewalk does stop and does not meet the rest of the sidewalk.
Okay. Help me again with that. Okay. We're talking about the south side of the lake area, correct? Along MLK.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There is a sidewalk that starts at the roadway along Lake Six or Dunbar Historical Lake that goes up to the south.
Yes, ma'am.
And it stops, what is there, a pole or something as to where it stops?
It continues on behind that fence at the top of the hill, but where that retaining wall is.
Mm-hmm.
It continues straight and goes quite a ways until it actually buds. From my understanding, I have not walked on that, continued down that sidewalk, but meets into where the wall...
Okay.
Kind of meets up.
Because that was also one of my concerns previously, and that's why there's a sidewalk from the base of the lake to up to the East Patrol Division Station. And there's also to... On the south side, there's a road sidewalk that goes from there, and it meets up to the beginning portion of the retainer wall that you're calling as the mural. So there's a walking space in front of that mural, and it stops at some point before reaching East 24th Street. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
And I apologize if I'm not explaining that.
Wilson, it's the gaps at the top of the hill.
Yes, at the top.
The gaps at the top of the hill.
Right, right.
Okay. We got you.
Yeah. To the south of the retainer wall.
Correct.
Okay. So you're saying that there's nothing to connect those?
At the moment, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm... Because those were two things that I was concerned about myself because there were a lot... There was a lot of grass or dirt and grass that were being utilized to get to the tops of the hills or, like you stated, in the... In the street. And that was a reason for the... I think it was Public Works helped us to obtain the funds through community development to create those sidewalks. So I guess if I missed that connection there, I think it is important that we maybe look to... Look to address that.
Yes, ma'am.
But can I see Ms. Anderson, Ms. Johnson? Could you come forward right quick, please? Yes, ma'am. Because I also received contact from Ms. Gloria Danforth also. She reached out to me. And as I stated, that's been a concern since I've been on the council and trying to find the money to somehow create some type of pedestrian walkway so that folks can actually get from one side of the... The bridge to the other. Because unlike you, taking away one of those roadways would just make the issue that much larger because of the types of vehicles that journey past it. There are buses, there are trucks, there are small trucks, there are big trucks and all of that because to the south side of that, you have things like FedEx and all of that on that side. But please know that it's always been pushed around. The deal has just been to find money. But since we look... We look to continue to add money in a bucket that Wilson continues to have, I want to make sure that we continue to do that. And if we miss that connection of that sidewalk, that's our error. We will miss that connection because we were definitely trying to make sure that some type of sidewalk was there. Number one, because we were trying to ensure that when citizens wanted to make their way to the East Patrol Division Station, they could do it on a sidewalk versus in the grass. So is there anything else that you got? Can I have them? If there's anything else that you'd like to share, just in case we missed it? Because one of the things that I would think would probably be to help us, I know that it's fluid, Mr. Mayor, but that we maybe make some type of statements, make notice some statements about maybe continuing to look at funding, continuing to look at, have an engineering look at it to see the best way to address the pedestrian walkway and in addition to that small piece of the sidewalk. Is there anything you guys?
Well, let's... Let me narrow that down so we don't open up. So the question would be, or is there anything else besides what they brought up in the... In their remarks earlier? Is there anything else that they would like, or they have not notified Wilson that they would like added or subtracted?
Yeah.
Besides the aforementioned?
Yeah. Yeah. And said, in light of the new information that you just received?
No. I've always been considerate, as you be considerate about trains. I know there's not much you can do with it.
Right.
But to have that noise all night long, it deserves your sleep. And then when PICO is going and your trains are going, you can barely get a good night's rest.
Anything else you can think of, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
And which set of trains is it? The trains behind the...
Cemetery.
Behind the cemetery. Gotcha. Okay. I'm not su... Oh, those are... Are those Pico's as well? Okay. We'll sit down and... We'll, we'll, we'll sit down and chat with Pyco.
Okay, I'm not really, I'm not trying to prolong anything, but you know, like that bridge, going, going over the bridge and everything? I'm not really sure if they could put kind of like a taller rail or something like that for the pedestrians when, if they could make it easier for them to walk across, the bikers to walk across and whoever, just put a rail up there. You know, years ago, we had a person to fall off of the bridge because there was no protection. That would be good if not taking any lanes away. If there's a way that maybe they could put a taller wall or something for protection so that people could do a, a crosswalk or something like that over the bridge for all safety.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, it's something to consider. I, I don't really know. I'm, I'm not a really good planner, but maybe there is something that can be done, you know? All you good thinkers up there.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm glad you said that on yesterday, when I went by the library, there were some folks who grew up in the neighborhoods and, and one of the questions that they asked was if we remembered when they first put the walkway, they had the bridge, they put the bridge with the walkway over East 24th that goes into East 26th Street. And I couldn't remember when they put that bridge there, but I know for years we didn't have the gate, the fencing on that, on that bridge which made it safer for us to go. So just want to make sure whatever we can find to do, and I'm hoping that we, we are able to do so and that it will be a safe place for citizens to find their way from one side to the other. Because I remember when Ms., I'm trying to think of her name, her car stopped and on that bridge and she, and she got hit.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson.
And she got hit. Yes, Ms. Johnson, yeah, yeah, thank you. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Thank you, Wilson, for your hard work. I just want to say, even though I don't have any constituents here, we've been meeting. We've had multiple meetings and I think for the most part, we are good. You know, I think being vocal at those, at those opportunities, those meetings and comment times, I think has made a difference. The only thing that I want to emphasize is that we are consistent and equitable in the distribution of dollars. I don't want one district to get more than the other. District one cannot continue to be ignored and obviously this is why we've been doing this. I do want to thank you. I want to thank Public Works because let me tell you that that department, Wood Franklin and his folks have been very helpful. So we've been trying to remedy some issues, as you well know, and you know, to address and get to where we are. So I know somebody said that we have been ignoring folks. We've proven that we're not ignoring. I hear what they're saying and the whole purpose of these sessions were to let people vocalize what they need. And we will continue, I think, to give that full consideration, just like the mayor said. We want to make sure that we are giving folks an opportunity, but at the same time, we do need to move on with this project. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Ms. Joy?
Wilson, what year was that bridge built?
I would have to get that, that year for you. I do not know.
Well, I, I have gone over that bridge. I've driven that neighborhood and I have a hard time trying to figure out what the function of that bridge is.
That bridge goes over railroad tracks.
Is it active?
Yes.
Very active?
Very, very active.
Well, it's very steep for one thing when you're going over, so I was just trying to think if there was any way to get around having to have that bridge. It, it separates things. I don't like that. You know, we've got enough separation and it separates things. So think about it, okay?
All right, Wilson, looks like you're off the hook.
All right, thank you all.
Did we do a motion on that, Mitch? All right, we want to do a motion on seven four and seven five. Is everybody good with that? All right, is there a motion to approve seven four and seven five? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right. All in favor of approval of seven point four and seven point five, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion on seven four and seven five carries seven zero. All right, we'll now move to seven point six. Council, if you recall from last week, the ordinance, Ms. Joy brought up that the ordinance required some additional language that was not in the ordinance, I guess I'll call reverter for, for better, lack of a better word. So at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Joy to read the amendment to the approved ordinance from last week that carried, and then we take up seven, seven six as amended, as opposed to taking a vote on the amendment because this is required language. Does that make sense? All right, Ms. Joy?
Seven point six before us, I move to amend section twenty-two, decimal zero four, decimal zero, zero nine E to add subsection four that shall state the following. Subsection four, underlined, sewer, lateral service and right-of-way, colon, "The request for repair of a lateral service line in the city's right-of-way or alley shall be made directly to the water utility department by a licensed plumber. The plumber must mark the location of the sewer connection and/or lateral service line with paint or pin flags."
All right, thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, so my understanding is what, with that language added to, as amended and read by Ms. Joy, that takes it back to the original ordinance prior to October of twenty-three. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve seven point six as amended. Thank you, Mr. Mabreer. Thank you, Mr. Massico. All right, any further discussion on seven point six as amended? All right, all in favor? Ms. Joy?
Well, I know it, this is second, technically it's a second reading, but I wanted to remind everyone because quite frankly, when we were here before, I had not gone back and looked at this ordinance in its origination. The old code sections for sewer repair go back to nineteen twelve. And the city maintained the repair and maintenance of all of the sewer components in the alley through the nineteen eighty-three code. Then in nineteen eighty-eight and to two thousand two, the provisions stating it was only the city who could repair those lines were dropped from the code. In two thousand two, that provision was inserted back in and the city has been the responsible party for lines in the alley up to the owner's property line. And Mayor, the mayor at the time in two thousand two was Mark McDougall. I haven't had an opportunity to call him and ask him what they were doing. And when you, when you look at the eighty-three code and eighty-eight, it's almost like it, it dropped that provision and whether that was intentional or not, I don't know. But the real issue didn't arise until what council did when we approved in October of twenty-three, moving that back. So that's a little history about how this issue has gone and I wanted to make sure that we all knew that because I honestly did not know it. I have also, since the last meeting, had opportunity to visit with several of the plumbers. I've had a person who lives in my district who has emailed me and given me a little information about the meetings that were held with the plumbers in the city. I had not heard of a hydrovac for this purpose. I've heard of some vacuums that the city has, yeah, vacuums that we use. But apparently hydrovac's were discussed in that meeting. And I think that's the reference, who was it? Uh, let me find it. John, it was either John King or David Benitez about the cost of this equipment. And because we do have so many companies with their lines in the alleys now that we didn't have before, I suspect before it was like water and atmos and sewer. And now we've got all of these others. And, and so in that meeting, I'm told that the hydrovac was discussed and that it was really recommended that that be utilized. Well, if it costs a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to buy the equipment, I understand why some of you were here then and now. But having had it explained to me how it works, it makes sense because it's water and it doesn't cut pipes and it doesn't require shoring. And they actually take what they, what the water trenches and put it into a tank and take it back to their locations. And when it dries out, they, I think they put it out on their, 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 their lots. And when it dries, they use it again for compacting. So it appears to me that the, that what we need to do is set policy. We're policymakers. And the plumbers have been involved. What had happened was the council was not, we were not informed and you can blame that on, on us if you choose. But if they had this plan of a way to do this and we leave the ordinance as it is, then why not subcontract with our plumbers who are geared to do the jobs and who are in the business? It is, in my opinion, it is the only way you're going to control what it costs to do this. Because if you bid it too high, you may not get the job. So let the forces determine the cost and have people in the alleys with the proper, proper equipment to do the job. So that's kind of what I have gleaned since the last meeting and I felt like it was important to let people know.
All right, thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I think that every household is a case by case. I, I mean, if we put limits or cost limits to the plumbers, I mean, I had somebody call me at five forty-five this morning who had an, an issue and she understood, she had a situation on Friday and had, she not been able to call a plumber directly, I think her problem would have increased. But what she also explained to me, it was a little bit high for her. Nobody educated her about the fact that there's programs and whatnot. I think what I've also heard from a lot of citizens, they don't want to see a fee added to them so that we can pay for this and revert everything back. So I do have some questions for Jarrett. Jarrett, do you mind? Well, I think-
Mr. Atkinson, are you available to answer some questions on this issue?
Sorry.
All right. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, you have a question? Let me, before-
Well, I-
Do, do we, do we do a motion in a second? We're, yeah, all right. Yeah, we did. All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, take it away.
I'm gonna withdraw and I think we have an idea, so I'm gonna go ahead and, and pause because I think we need to tackle this a little bit more. There are a lot of questions, but sorry, Jarrett, I didn't mean to put you on the spot and then take that spotlight from you, but we're gonna put it on hold.
I bet he's okay. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say, you know, I think our next agenda item is going to address a lot of these issues because there's so much going on out there. And so I encouraged everybody to stick around, especially our plumbing community. Please stay around and then we may want to talk to you guys after the meeting. But I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question, Mayor.
All right. I don't, I don't see any more discussion, so instead of taking that up, let's, is, is anybody having further discussion on seven six before we move to seven seven? All right. We have a motion and a second on seven six, all in favor of approval of seven point six. And remember, we're as amended. Please say aye. Any opposed by saying nay? Nay? All right, motion carries five to two. All right, now we've got another fun agenda item, seven point seven. All right, I think in light of a lot of the requests for more information, and so, so in a sense, what we've done as amended is that the ordinance is now back to how it was prior to October of twenty twenty-three. We now have an ad hoc committee request presented by Ms. Patterson-Harris and Dr. Wilson where we will create a committee to, to further really deep dive into this and study this. And what the, the plan is, if you look at this resolution, is to create one member appointed by each council member and then add in four other outside sources, which would, would be plumbers from our community. Probably many of you here that volunteered already to show up today may have some requests for you to be involved. And so that's, that's what we have in front of us is this resolution. Mr. Atkinson, did you want to have, do we have anybody who wants to present, to read this resolution or should I have Dr. Wilson or Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I would turn it over to our, to our two council members. I think they've got it set up and it will, I believe, lead to your discussion.
And I got a point down here to Dr. Wilson. So Dr. Wilson, if you'd like to present the resolution that you are proposing here today that you and Ms. Patterson-Harris are proposing.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I can't read from the resolution directly because I can't get it to pull up on my laptop. So it, Ms. Patterson-Harris, if you want to add anything in as I go through it, but I think Sheila and I both felt very passionate about this after our last meeting that, and I think all of us did, that we didn't have all of the information, you know, that I think maybe we all made some decisions hastily without having all the information present, whether that's from our citizens, whether it's from our plumbing community, and we need to take a better look at that. I want to, we want to be able to hear everybody's perspective. This was not a decision that I think needed to be made sitting from up here. I think there was so much input needed from every person that we did not have enough time to look through that. And that is unfair to our, to you guys and it's unfair to our citizens out there, whichever side you are on. And so Ms. Patterson-Harris and I came together last time after our meeting and with our city manager and some of our city staff drafted the resolution to create this ad hoc committee, which like the mayor said, we are going to each appoint one member from our district, just a citizen member. And then we would like to pull four members from the already approved plumbing list, since you guys have been so heavily involved, to sit on this committee to be able to bring different, different perspectives. And that way we can come up with a compromised or whatever decision it needs to be that's best for Lubbock and best for all of us as a whole. Ms. Sheila, would you want me to read the resolution? Would you like to read it? But that's overall the consensus of what we decided. Do you want me to read it, Mayor? Okay. But I mean, that's, I can read this, a lot of words that nobody probably cares to hear that's written in very fun language. But that's overall what we wanted to do was to make sure that everybody had a voice in this because it affects all of us, whether we sit up here, whether you sit out there, whether you're, whether you're at home, no matter what socioeconomic background you come from, this affects you. And we wanted to make sure that we do this fairly and with everybody's input. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wilson. Anything else to add to that, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm just gonna say that that kind of says it all. I think the, those of us here on the dice have the actual resolution, but you explain the purpose of it just so that we can have, get all the information needed to go forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve agenda item seven point seven?
So move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there a second? All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris, is there a second? All right, is there any discussion on seven point seven? Is anybody requesting that I read the entirety of seven point seven? All right, Ms. Joy? All right, Ms. Joy?
I typically like citizen committees, people committees. But this one's a little bit different because this is a policy decision. And I understand that we didn't have the information we needed at the last meeting, which is why I went out and did my homework. I think there's a simpler solution. And the plumbers are the main people and the staff. That's who needs to get together and make a recommendation. And then we, we can either approve it as a policy or not. So I'm not in favor on this issue of a committee. It makes sense if you're doing a bond election, something like that, that makes sense. But this is very much a policy decision. And if you look at the history of this, it's pretty clear that it's been a policy decision through all these years. So I won't be in support of a committee.
All right, thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
No doubt, there was a lot of misinformation from the beginning of this and this is our chance to, with subject matter experts to correct some of that. We, we've already done a lot of that. We've, and unfortunately, it has been difficult to correct because once you light a fire in a field of dry grass, well, it spreads very quickly. But I think having the subject matter experts and also having the voice of the community, I think that combination will give us an opportunity to come to resolution. And I agree that we, our staff is also very, very important in this because, I mean, in several discussions, we are putting so much staff time into this and we now have an opportunity to work with subject matter experts in the community that know the industry and are ready to do that. So I am going to support this ad hoc committee because it's necessary and, and probably should have been the first thing that we did.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Mr. Massengo?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said last time, just taking this back to its original form doesn't solve the issue of responsiveness, which was the problem to begin with. Seems like the more we talk about this, the more we get, uh, new information revealed. I would love to find a way that our, uh, that works for our plumbing community. I'd love to find a way that works for our ratepayers. It's not a, a financial burden. If the committee is the, the mechanism to move forward, uh, committees can be, um, unproductive, but I do like the fact this has a definitive date to report back to the council. So, um, I'm encouraged that this group appointed would, uh, if this passes today, could really dig into and find, uh, really a good resolution for all parties involved, the city, the ratepayers and our plumbing community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Massengo. Mr. McBrier?
Yeah, I understand what Ms. Joy is saying. It's a policy decision in many ways, but our policies can't be divorced from our citizens' concerns either and they're the ones that have really driven us to reconsider this. So I, I'm in favor of actually in this instance, involving citizens on it, but I do realize the expertise will come a lot from our staff and the plumbing community. But the citizens need to know that they have input on this because they felt like they didn't, uh, the first time we went through this. So, um, I'd be in favor of this.
All right, thanks, thank you, Mr. McBrier. All right, we have, um, a resolution in front of us. We have a motion and a second. Uh, in, all in favor of approval of seven point seven, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries six to one. All right, we are not in, we are not recessed for the day. Thank you all for being here. Thank you gentlemen for lifting your voices up. Appreciate you, probably going to be calling on you for further discussion. And so thanks for being willing to step up. Uh, at this time, council is going to take a brief, uh, break and then we are moving back into executive session for further discussion on staffing issues. Uh, council, is, uh, ten minutes good enough? Fifteen? Five? Ms.? All right, all right, let's, let's come back at, um, uh, ten after four into executive session. So that's eight minutes, that's a compromise. Thank you very much, we are in recess.